Okay, this time I'll call us to order officially and we will ask the clerk to call and establish the role.
Commissioner Blackmore?
Present.
Commissioner Askey?
Here.
Chairman Whitaker?
Present.
Commissioner Hart?
Here.
Commissioner Stoltz?
Present.
All members are present, thank you for that. We do have the agenda that was prepared and sent out last week on our website and Facebook page, there are packets in the back of the room if anyone's not picked up a packet. We do have one item that I'm going to request that we amend the agenda under our new business, right after the establishment of the meeting calendar, if we could insert, Jad Johnson's here with us tonight from our Public Defense Office for their annual contract renewal for the Public Defense Office, and so asked that we amend the agenda and add that so we can get that handled this month since it starts in January. So do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented with the one additional modification to the agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart, do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Askey, any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved with the one modification. Okay, in the packet is the minutes from our previous meeting back on December the 22nd, 2022, 7 o'clock here in Lafette. Is there any corrections or modifications or concerns with those minutes from the board? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Blackmore, do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Stoltz, any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as presented. Okay, we do have three items here tonight for some public hearings. This is the first of two public hearings, we'll have another public hearing on these in two weeks, but anytime we make any modifications to our ordinances, we advertise that in the paper and that was done back on January the 4th, also on our website, and then we allow citizens to come and speak or ask questions or provide additional input to these. So I'll read this first one here and then we'll ask if anybody'd like to come up and speak to these ordinances. Ordinance O-01-23, an ordinance amending certain sections of Chapter 22 of the Code of Walker County, Georgia regarding land development to provide for an effective date to repeal and, excuse me, repeal any and all conflicting ordinances and parts of ordinances to provide for servability and to provide for other purposes, whereas Walker County desires to amend its land development code to provide clarity regarding the procedure requesting an appeal of a decision by the Planning Commission for a variance request. Therefore, be it ordered or ordinated that by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County that the Code of Walker County, Georgia is amended as follow. Articles 4, zoning Division 1, generally Section 22-113B is deleted as an entirety and replaced with the following. So the verbiage that would be deleted is struck through there in red, is what's being proposed. All decisions made by the Planning Commission for a variance request may be appealed to the County Board of Commissioners. That line would go away and what would be inserted to give more clarification would say all decisions made by the Planning Commission for a variance request may be appealed to the County Board of Commissioners. An appeal must be made within 30 days of the Planning Commission decision and submitted in writing to the county clerk. Handwritten, typed, or emailed correspondences are acceptable. An appeal shall state the specific fact upon which the variance shall be granted based on criteria set forth in Code Section 22-113. That's the proposed language to be inserted. This ordinance is effective immediately upon its adoptions. Number three, all ordinances are part of ordinances in conflict where the ordinance are hereby repealed. If any section, cause, sentence, or phrase of this ordinance is held to be invalid or unconstitutional by the courts or jurisdiction, then said holding shall in no way affect the validity in the remaining portion of the ordinance. Yes, once this is adopted or modified. So is there anyone here tonight in the, in our public that would like to speak or come forward to talk about this proposed ordinance? Okay.
Speaker asks a question.
Either one, if you'd like to come forward, if you'd just like to come up here to the podium, we just need you to state your name for the record and so they can, he can get you on the camera too.
That's where I want to be on camera. That's why I dressed up.
Yeah.
No, just a question on this, first time I've seen it, but the-
State your name if you would.
Jamie Holsey.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Down in the Cove area. The residential being built, cluster homes is what I call it. I moved from Kennesaw area that, know there's been a lot of controversy over the type buildings, I know what things turn into with multifamily and cluster homes, it kind of goes downhill after a while, but would this address some of that when planning and zoning comes to you with maybe turning down a development? And what happens after that? You just say approve or not approve even after they submitted in writing an appeal? Or does this ever go to a public hearing to make a better decision on what's being developed in that area?
What this is really, if someone goes to the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission has the authority to approve a variance.
Right.
And sometimes a variance may be, you have a setback on-
Sure.
-for a building or something and they need a foot or two or something like that, is just one of many examples. It wasn't really clear in the ordinance what the process was or the time that they had. It was, it was too vague. And so we had a couple of appeals within the last 90 days and it was just a lot of question about what's the process, what's the timeline?
Right.
Who do you send it to, those type of things. So this is just really just trying to bring clarity to just that one topic-
Right.
-of variances. Now, when you're talking about zoning or things of that nature, what you're talking about, cluster homes or apartments and all, that would be-
Another-
That would be more of a zoning, but yeah, there's always two public hearings on all zoning.
Right, right.
The Planning Commission holds the first one and then the following week we hold the second one here.
Okay, alright. Well, that answers that and it'll look like more steps to take if you, more formal steps to make sure things are-
Yes.
-really reviewed properly, so.
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I want to-
Yes.
-insert something real quick. And so when we're talking about these and just as you read that, and we're looking at inserting, you know, all decisions made by the Planning Commission on variances request, well, when it comes to us here at the board, it comes in the form of a recommendation. Is that correct?
It does on zoning, but to my understanding, maybe attorney could jump in-
Well, well-
...on a variance.
Well, my point being is, like I said, is that, that, like I said, any, any, all, everything has to come, they all come to us to be, for the final decision.
I don't think so on variances, do they?
Well, that's, that's where, that's where I'm at, is that if, if the people are coming, you know, if they request a variance, they have to come to us to, I mean, if they request an appeal-
Yes.
-they come to us.
Yes.
So, but I, I think that we need to be aware of, of any activity of the Planning Commission, that the actions that they would take, being that as per the Enabling Act, all, all things of planning and zoning are of the board now. So it doesn't specify anything not being of, so I just want to, I had this conversation shortly with Joe, but it's something that we need to look at the verbiage and clear up, that, that, you know, they come in the form of a recommendation, not a decision. And then we need to kind of look at that and see and just get it, get it kind of clear that up. So I just wanted to bring that out and kind of-
Well, I guess this board would have the authority and the attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, could, could change that if this board had the desire-
Oh, surely.
-to approve all variances. But at this point, the Planning Commission has the authority to approve a variance, and so if the, if there's a disagreement by the person applying and they want to appeal that, then that would come to this board on that variance appeal.
Right, right, and I'm just saying, as per our enabling act that we're working under, we need to kind of get it all, we need to kind of get it in line because it does state specifically that all, everything planning and zoning is of the board, you know, so I just want to make sure that, not to, not to confuse it, but to clarify it, just that we need to see, we need to see what's coming, you know, and like I said, it really comes in the, in the form, their decisions would come in the form of recommendations to recommend, to approve, deny, table or, or no recommendation whatsoever. That's really the four actions that the Planning Commission would take.
Let me, let me just interject. I would have to review the, our code, but I believe currently if a variance is applied for and it's granted, then, and if nobody appeals, it doesn't end up here. Now, we certainly, you could change-
Okay.
-the ordinance to read that all variances regardless of the outcome could be appealed. Now, that, that would-
Well, that's kind of what this states, that all decisions made by the Planning Commission for a variance request may be appealed. It states that all can.
So let's, let's look at this scenario. Let's say that a person X seeks a variance and the Planning Commission says, okay, we grant that variance. Now, if the land property owner doesn't file an appeal, or if nobody appeals, then I don't think it would automatically come to you.
That's the current question.
Right, but, but you certainly can change it, and if you desire to do it, now would probably be an appropriate time because we're talking about-
Well, that-
-all variances.
Right.
Let me just ask you so that I, I have a clear understanding, and I know that's the intent here, is that we come to some bottom line. Are you recommending that all, one thing is changing the word decision to recommendation-
Right.
-and another would be that all variances, whether appealed or not, come to this board. That can be done.
Well, I, I just, I just feel like that by, by the way that, when the Enabling Act kind of draw that out and specifically stated that everything of planning and zoning, you know, that the board would, I just think that we would probably need to see, you know, see them, if, if we're the governing body that would hear the appeal if they're denied and make that decision, I would think that it would be appropriate for us to see what decisions were approved and not, not just be in the dark with it, I guess you would say.
Okay, so-
Yeah, so that's what I would be wanting to do.
My, my suggestion would be based on your comment and assuming that your other commissioners agree if you want to modify it, we might want to modify it a little bit further to say that all variance requests come to the Board of Commissioners for a final decision because right now, and I may not be speaking clear, clarifying this for you, but right now, if it's not an appeal, it doesn't come here, but we certainly can, can, can modify this to say, all recommendations regarding variances, whether it's an up or down, whether it's appealed or it's not appealed, come to y'all for a vote.
Just like some-
Right, that, that certainly-
I mean, I think, I just feel, I just think that we, you know, the, in the essence of knowing what's going on and like I said, if, if somebody's coming and asking us to reverse a decision or asking for an appeal on a decision, you know, if we're doing that, then I think we should, I just feel like we should be able to, we should see whether we, you know, I think we should see them anyway, you know, whether they have to be approved by us, if, I think we still need to see the activities of the Planning Commission, I guess it would be.
So if it comes before you, let me make sure I've got this correct, let's say that the, let's use a setback as an example, and it's, let's say in one particular area, we normally require a 20-foot setback, but for this particular piece of property, the homeowner's seeking a 10-foot.
Right, right.
Okay, and so at the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission says, we, we agree, we will approve this variance. Now, the homeowner doesn't appeal, nobody from the county otherwise appeals, what, what you're suggesting is, is that all variances still come for final board approval, and that's perfectly fine, there's, there's no legal problem with that. I just want to make sure that I'm interpreting it correctly, that you want all variances, however they're voted at the Planning Commission, to come before y'all for final decision. Am I, am I correct? I'd be happy to try to clarify.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to, you know, we were just, we're starting to go through and look at this ordinance revision and I just kind of wanted to clear, you know, there's a lot of things that we, little verbiage and words that we just to clear up as we go along.
Right.
And it just when I, as I've reviewed it, and when it says, you know, all decisions made by the Planning Commission for variance request may be appealed, well then that, you know, if all decisions may be appealed, I just want some clarity to understand, you know, so that we-
Right.
That's what we're trying to do, is clean it up.
How, how this was originally written, Commissioner, was, in my understanding, that the intent was for y'all to only hear those that have been appealed, but certainly from a legal perspective, have the right to hear them all. So let's say, for example, going back to my setback example, that the Planning Commission says, okay, we'll go to 10-foot. Enter this scenario, even though nobody appeals, at the next Commissioners' meeting, it would still come to y'all and y'all, y'all either agree with it or you don't agree with it.
So it would count to us as a recommendation at that point?
Right. In other words, it sort of takes out the whole idea of appeal because it's going to come to you whether somebody appeals it or not. And that would take here the concern that you expressed, that you want to know what the decision was and have the opportunity to either agree or not agree with the Planning Commission decision. So we certainly can, from a legal perspective, will modify this to just simply say, all recommendations of the Planning Commission come to the board and the board will make a final decision to hold the recommendation, to decline the recommendation, or somehow to modify the recommendation.
So this would make it, take the gray out, the gray area-
Right.
-and make it easier for the citizen because they won't have to type that to the clerk, they won't have to put that in writing to the clerk, it'll automatically come to us.
Well, yes, that is-
That would, see, that's, that would change some of that verbiage where that they were going to need to be able to pull up a certain code section and be able to interpret that, that code section, that criteria, whereas someone, you know, the layperson may not understand the, the verbiage or how to interpret that criteria, so they're coming behind the eight ball right off the bat when they, when they, so-
The only difference would be if the landowner gets the recommendation that he wants, the landowner would still come before this board for the final approval, and, and that's okay. In other words, you'll hear every variance, whether the Planning Commission recommends up, down, or no action, and it'll be up to y'all, and, and that's fine. And if that is the will of this group, I will be more than happy to prepare an appropriate revision so that at the next meeting that can be inserted.
What that would be doing, to expand that, is it would be taking the responsibility of the Planning Commission to approve variances and would change that to as recommendations, just like zoning. So the Planning Commission would no longer have approval for variances, they would all be recommendations and they would all come before this board for approval.
Well, and as per the Enabling Act, that's pretty much kind of what it says, that all things planning and zoning are of the board, so we do-
But this board has the authority to give the Planning Commission-
Sure.
-the authority to do that because they have, they've been practicing that now.
Right.
But if you want to change that authority, and we would have to change this to, all, all recommendations of variances would come to this board.
I just put it out here as a suggestion to clarify it and make it, make it simpler and get some of the gray area out, that, that's all.
So I think what would be, well, let's see, we don't actually have it under new business, so-
No.
-that would be the appropriate time, if, if that's the consensus of the group, and then what I will do is I will redraft that section to conform with what you're suggesting, but-
Commissioner Stoltz, you had something?
So, yes, sir, so would that basically eliminate the appeal process totally?
It would, yes. So it, it would automatically come to you. Just, I, I don't know the specific intent, why variances didn't automatically come to you unless appealed. It may have something to do, and this is just a guess on my part, in terms of if there were a lot of variances and they were approved, you wouldn't have to consider each and every variance.
Sure.
I haven't done a study to see specifically how many variances there are, you're, because right now, anything that comes to you is when there's the-
Appeal.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Well, I just wanted clarification for everybody, even on zoning decisions this board makes, a person still has the ability to appeal to Superior Court, right?
Yes, after, after they exhaust their appeal rights through us, yes, through the Board of Commissioners, and that would be applicable for, for anything, including the variance.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Sure.
Any other comments, questions?
So, so if you can just give me some assistance so I make sure that that's the consensus of what this board wants to do, then I can redraft it and have it available and we can put it on, you know, and put it out to the public. That is what y'all want to do. It sounds like informally, that's, that's what you're saying, and I don't necessarily need a vote, but-
Would y'all like to look at that?
A group of y'all.
So would y'all like to look at that?
You want to see how it looks?
Yeah, once you get it drafted out.
Yeah. Okay, so we're going to need to do that.
It's pretty simple, I mean, it's pretty simple, you're going to change about one word and it's going to need to come here or not, there's not a lot to-
From decisions to recommendations.
Yeah, there's not a lot, yeah, there's not a lot to discuss on that, it's, it's changing decisions to recommendations and we would see whatever comes, and on a regular planning commission agenda, there may be four variance requests and two may be denied. So you're talking about adding two to three line items-
Yeah.
-possibly, or maybe sometimes more, maybe sometimes none. But it would just clarify that appeals process, get the gray area out and it just, you know, it was, and it would get us in line with what our, our governing document has, basically drawn out for us.
Right, so two, two revisions, change the word decision to recommendation and delete the appeal process because it wouldn't be an appeal automatically-
That whole second sentence would be removed.
Think it would simplify things a lot and still-
I can prepare that and get that to you, sure thing. We'll get it out as part of the agenda, that's all.
Thank you.
Do that.
Okay, move to the next one. Okay, alright, we're going to move to the next ordinance hearing, this is ordinance O-2-23. This is an ordinance amending certain sections of Chapter 26 of the Code of Walker County, Georgia regarding road and right-of-way to provide for an effective date to repeal any and all conflicting ordinances and parts of ordinances to provide for servability and to provide for other purposes, whereas Walker County desires to amend roads and right-of-way code regarding a minimum requirement for construction of roads for county maintenance. Therefore, be it the ordinance that, by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, the Code of Walker County, Georgia is amended as follow. Article 1 in the general section 26-2A2 is deleted in its entirety and replaced with the following. So I'm going to, going to read here next, was what would be deleted, and then it's a rewrite, which there's a lot of similarities. County requires inspections, inspections of the county official shall be required during construction, at every stage of construction, including but not limited to, after the following clearing, grappling and stumping of topsoil, subbase compaction, base layer, binder layer, and top layer, top layer. At each inspection, proper drainage, pipe size, and class will be approved. Grading of the roadbed must be done by proper grading method during and upon completion of the roadbed, of the site inspection will require to determine if material is suitable for, for subbase. Such this subbase be in question, then the county inspector will have the State Highway Department test the material. If the material is not approved, a minimum of one foot of Class A or Class B chert shall be applied to the roadbed and road, or a subbase must pass the county-approved compaction test showing at least 95% compaction. Base material must be a minimum of six inches of graded aggregate base, GAB, rolled meeting current minimum GDOT specifications, the base binder must be a minimum thickness of two inches when compacted, topping must be minimum two-inch thickness when compacted. Public Works Director or designated will inspect each stage for compliance. So the new verbiage would read, and this is very similar, county required inspections, inspection by the county official shall be required during construction, at every stage of construction, including but not limited to, after the following clearing, grappling, and stripping of the topsoil, subbase compaction, base layer, binder layer of topping layer. At every inspection, proper drainage, pipe size, and class must be approved. Grading of the roadbed must be done by proper grading method during and upon completion of the roadway bed, onsite inspection will be required to determine if the material is suitable for subbase. Should the subbase be in question, the county inspector will have a geotech engineer test the material at the expense of the contractor of the roadbuilder. If the material is not approved, a minimum of one foot of Class A or B chert shall be applied to the roadbed and rolled, or the subbase must be passed a county-approved compaction test showing at least 95% compaction. The base material must be a maximum of six-inch graded aggregate, GAB, rolled meeting current minimum GDOT specifications, the base binder must be a minimum thickness of four inches when compacted, topping must be a minimum of two-inch thickness when compacted. Public Works Director or designated will inspect each stage of the, of the compliance. The ordinance is effective immediately upon adoption, all appeals are parts of the ordinance in conflict, repeal or hereby repealed. If any section of the cause, statement, or phrase of ordinance is held to be invalid, unconstitutional by any court, contempt judge, jurisdiction, then said holdings shall in no way affect the validity of the remaining portion of the ordinance. So I'd like to get our, Carlin Bowers, our road superintendent to come up, and I know he has put a lot of time and work and studied this a lot, and maybe you can give us a little overview of the direction here.
So really, the only thing our specs used to be, six, two, and two, six-inch graded aggregate base, two-inch binder, and two-inch topping. Most everywhere, surrounding counties, others, most all other specs are six, four, and two, four-inch binder, two-inch topping. So that's really about the only thing that's changing in this. After reading this, I found a couple of drainage pipe size and class, that's typically done by the engineers who are designing a development. And there are some definitions, there's a little bit of confusion on Class A or B chert, that term is not relatively used anymore, it's Class 1, 2, or 3, I believe, and there's some definitions of that. That may need to change to compacted field or classes 1, 2, or 3. I've, I've just had some folks question that from time to time, and I don't, I don't even think that that's in the GDOT realm of their requirement for road building anymore, anymore. But the main thing that in here is having, having a geotech engineer do some of these inspections and compaction tests, and us not having to pay for it, especially if there's any question in subgrade. And the, the biggest change is instead of having two inches of binder, we're putting down four. So when a developer comes in, they're building a subdivision, we have at least a foot of road, road material instead of some of the things we've found and trying to fix now, which is sometimes four inches of stone and, and two inches of binder, and that's it. This is just adding another, some more material to this, to our roads before we take them over or whatever.
Yeah, like you said, it removes the State Highway Department doing the test and changes that to a geotech engineer, and then that would be at the expense of the contractor or the roadbuilder, so that's, that's a clarification and- So, that's, that's a clarification and updating, modernization as well.
So, in these other, the Class A or B, is that something I need to get with David on and clarify that up before we finalize this thing?
I was, I was just getting ready to express to you if you can check with me as soon as possible, so that we, you know, when we get down to these technical specifications, I'd prefer to y'all, because it's out of my scope of knowledge. And so, yes, if it's supposed to be Class one, two, or three instead of A or B, we definitely need to revise it. And I, I don't know if that was the only change, but if you'll look at details of that and make sure that there's nothing else that you're suggesting needs to be changed. We want to make sure that we're gonna get down to the final, that we've got it just exactly how we want it, so no confusion. We're gonna need to revise later.
And I'm, I'm not sure if we need to take this, pipe size and class must be approved. Like I said, I mean, a lot of these specifications are, are a good thirty years old. I would imagine that drainage pipes, that we do that with driveway culverts, but in a development, like I said, that is kind of handled with the developers, engineers, and their initial... I don't, I don't know that we need to have that in there.
That's, that's usually handled by the design professionals that are putting together the...
Yeah, they do all the hydrology reports and all of that.
That's exactly right.
And I'm afraid if we have it in here, that is a step that possibly could be skipped, and then they have us come out and do it. And then we'd have to do all the hydro...
We'd have to hire that guy.
Yeah, we'd have to hire that.
Yeah, so, yeah, you're right, you're exactly right, Carlin.
Yeah, and that was one that's been in the ordinance for some time. Like I say, probably shouldn't have been there, but it'd be taken out as we make this modification and clean this up.
So, so your recommendation, Mr. Bowers, would be to delete that entire sentence, that each inspection proper drainage pipe size and class must be approved, right?
I mean, that, as far as the storm drainage goes, that is something that I do look at whenever it's being installed, and make, I make sure that it is matching what's on their plans and what's on their drawings. As far as me approving, that, I'm kind of in question on that sentence myself. I know if I was a developer, I would read that and think, well, we'll have, we'll see what the county tells us to put in.
Does it need to be then proper installation?
That's what, that's installation would be doing. That's what he would be doing, is overseeing the installation as per manufacturer specification or design professional specifications.
And another side of, of that is stormwater. Typically, John would kind of look at some of that stormwater stuff too, because that's what that's referencing is norm... In older subdivisions, when this was done, there was no stormwater. Most everything's pipe here to there, point A to point B. Now, most everything is underground, and it all try, they try to funnel it all to a retention pond.
Yeah, so you and John can get with the attorney and kind of flesh that out on that part too, so we can get that modernized and updated.
Okay.
And we need to word that.
Everything else seems to be, and it seems like there's something different every time you read through the entire building specifications of a road or of a subdivision, but this is the main thing. Make sure we got plenty of asphalt on it before they leave.
There you go, plenty of base and asphalt, good job, Carlin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone in the public that would like to speak on this ordinance proposal? Okay, like I say, we'll have some modifications, and we'll get those posted on our website, so people can see the proposed revisions that will be heard again next meeting, and will be voted on potentially by the board next meeting. Okay, the, the next one here that we have is ordinance O-3-23, an ordinance amending certain sections of Chapter one and two of the Code of Walker County, Georgia, regarding service expectations for members of the board, boards, committees, and commissions to provide for the effective date to repeal any and all conflicting ordinances and parts of ordinances to provide for the servability and to provide for other purposes, whereas Walker County desires to amend its code of ordinance to create a uniform policy for all individuals serving on boards, committees, or commissions of the Board of Commissioners, therefore be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, that the Code of Walker County, Georgia, is amended as followed. Chapter one, general provisions, is amended by adding the following section, so this is an addition. Section 1-21, boards, committees, and commissions that advise the board, that advise the Board of Commissioners, failure, failure to attend three consecutive meetings of any ten meetings per term of office shall be considered an automatic resignation. Upon such resignation, the chair of the board, committee, or commission shall notify the chair of the County Board of Commissioners of such occurrence as promptly as possible, so the chair may appoint a replacement with approval of the board to fill the unexpired term. Number two, Chapter two, Administration, Article one in general, section 2-97C1 is deleted as an entirety and replaced with the following. So, this is the section that would be deleted and read. Failure to attend at least eight regular voting meetings of the Planning Commission in a calendar year without justification to be excused, members of the Planning Commission shall notify the Planning and Development or Planning Commission Chair when they intend to be absent of the meeting. Insert would be, members are prohibited from having expertise, communication, discussions outside the meeting regarding the matters that are to be heard and voted on by the Planning Commission. Members are found in violation of the rules shall be subject to removal of the Planning Commission by a vote of the Board of Commissioners. Number three, Chapter two, Administration, Article one in general, section 2-97C is hereby amended by adding the following section to read as follows. Number four, failure of a member of the Planning Commission to comply fully with the Georgia Open Meetings Act, OCGA 50-141, the Georgia Conflict of Interest in Zoning Act, OCGA 36-67A1, or any other provision of the Development Code applicable to property owners by operating, by or occupied by the members of the Planning Commission shall constitute for removal by the Board of Commissioners. Number five, within three months of their initial appointment, each member must complete twelve hours of training and zoning procedures and/or comprehensive planning conducted and/or sponsored by ACCG or the University of Georgia Carl Vincent Institute of Government, or equivalent as determined by the Director of Planning. No member shall be allowed to vote on any zoning matters until at least six, six hours of the un, unforementioned training has been completed. The appointed member may participate in all meetings, discussions, and activities, but may not vote until six hours of training has been completed. Failure to receive twelve hours of training within three months of appointment will automatically grounds for removal from the office by the Board of Commissioners. The ordinance is effective immediately upon adoption. All ordinances are part of the ordinance in conflict, where the ordinance are hereby repealed. If any section of the cause, sentence, or phrase of the ordinance is held to be invalid or unconstitutional or any court jurisdiction, then the holding shall in no way be affect validity of the remaining portion of the ordinance. Any public comment? Anyone like to speak on this? Hearing none, any additional comment from the board?
I just have one. And speak, and, and talking with our interim, the planning director, on the toy, on this, on the training and ACCG, Carl Vincent, both of them wonderful, and the equivalent of, determined by the planning director. That, that can be in, we can accept some in-house training as well, put on programs, or, or have some people come and speak, or even things like that. We do, I want to make sure that that's understood, that that could be included as well, because the reason I say that, we're putting a ninety-day, a three-month timeframe on it, and as a guy who's intended classes for twenty years, sometimes you can't get it all in, but we could have in-house training and, and stuff like that, correct, John? So, we could, we could kind of have a combination of the two to keep it in, in compliance with that three months. So, we'll make sure that we understood, or were clear, that some in-house, as, as approved by the director, would be acceptable. Everybody good with that?
Yeah. Any other comments?
I do have a question for Mr. Gottlieb. Mr. Gottlieb, on the wording, members are prohibited from having expertise, communication, does that also cover social media? Any discussions that were done by a board member on social media?
Well, usually, we think of expertise, the short answer to your question is yes, I believe.
Okay.
That that would include that. Normally, when we think of expertise, we're thinking of, for example, you and I...
Yes.
Speaking, and you're, I'm on the board, and you're a property owner.
Yes.
And so, it's more spontaneous interchange of comments. But yes, I think because social media is such a broad definition these days, texting stuff, yes, I would say that that...
Good question.
Okay, thank you.
Is that something we may need to add, that verbiage, for clarification?
Yeah, I will take a look at that. I also had one other, I'm trying to write and talk at the same time, so if everybody... I know that one of the concerns that the commission had was regular attendance, as much as reasonably possible, of members attending the Planning Commission, and so, the part that was stricken was failure to attend eight regular meetings of the Planning Commission in a calendar year without justification. We struck that, and the proposal is failure to attend three consecutive meetings, or any ten, or any ten meetings per term of office. Okay, so, term of office, is this, is that a two-year term?
It's gonna vary from commission to committee to, you know, how many meetings that they have, because we have some board appointments that meet quarterly, some meet monthly, some meet as needed.
Now, this is just specific to the Planning Commission?
Now, this would be boards, committees, and commissions, so it would be all, so that's saving a standard for all.
So, this, this would be, for example, if your term of office was, sometimes people are appointed for one year, two year, four year, and so, on a four-year, irregardless of the length of the term, if, if they miss ten meetings per term. I, I guess what I'm just trying to avoid is, is technically, somebody, and I hope nobody would do this with the intention, and maybe we don't need to address it, maybe this is a legal, you know, my, my thought process. Failure to attend three consecutive meetings if they fail to contend, if they fail to attend one and two, and then make it to number three, then they could miss four and five and make it to number six. I mean, it could be either intentionally or unintentionally, you could miss a lot of meetings, and only miss two at a time instead of three at a time, you see what I'm saying?
Right, oh, yeah.
So, I don't know if, if you want to set a maximum missing per year as opposed to per term.
Yeah, it needs to be defined as a, as a calendar year versus a...
Term, because the terms vary.
Maybe, maybe we could set it, because some of your committees only meet quarterly, some meet monthly. Maybe, you know, we say a percentage of, so if they meet quarterly, you know, well, if you miss three out of four, that's pretty bad, but otherwise, three doesn't sound so terrible over your term. So, I think my recommendation would be maybe to make it a percentage of meetings per calendar year that you're involved in. We, we can take this...
Yeah, we call it a workhorse a little bit.
But, but I'll be happy to, to take a look at that, and, because I know that that was one of our concerns, was making sure regular attendance, not just missing three in a row, certainly, I think that's valid, but there's also other ways that they could be really not actively involved and not miss three in a row. So, I'll, I'll make a recommendation to you, give it to you for your...
Awesome, thank you.
We have a question on that.
Yes, please come forward.
As far as on the educational stuff, as far as the twelve hours, we had a discussion about the in-house training. I know they want the ACCG and the university training on there as well, but just like to make sure there's in-house training approved, because it's hard to lock down seven or eight people to go somewhere, and they need to understand the jurisdiction before they start getting a understanding of the state and whatnot, you know, just understanding, because everybody, every local municipality, you know, adopts different ordinances and whatnot, so just understanding what Walker County's doing before they get a broad understanding of the state, whatnot, could be very beneficial, you know? So, that was just my...
That, that could be your initial, that could be an initial three hours of training, is getting the people, the new people up to speed on how the board's set up, or, you know, how, how it works, and...
Well, no, you have to have six hours before you're allowed to be a participant, as far as on voting or anything, or making a recommendation, so six hours, sounds like a ton, but it might take more than that just to understand what Walker County's doing over a period of time, or the local ordinances, or the, anything for planning and zoning. So, to have the, the in-house training seems huge before you start trying to figure out what the state's doing or other places.
I, I think we kind of, we addressed that kindly under that, that the director, you know, the director of planning would determine the equivalent of, so we, you know, if you...
He determines it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so that, we got you covered on that.
Is there a curriculum you already have in place, or is that something that you would put into place?
Yeah, they already have packets that they get when they become part of the board.
Okay.
But I think probably looking at that, making sure it's, it's detailed out to, to what we're doing, it pretty much is. But just going over that, just instilling that in them, you know, before, just giving them a broader understanding and knowing what the county's doing, you know, before. I just think it's easy to, you know, get so much information about, you know, from ACCG or other places about what everyone else is doing, you really need to know Walker County's...
Yeah, some of it doesn't even pertain to what we're doing.
Absolutely, and understand what ordinances are before they can, you know, have an opinion on everything else.
Agreed.
So, that was it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any public comment on this one? Hearing none, we'll move forward to our next item of business. This time, this is our section where we have any public comment, anyone that would like to come and speak publicly. We allow you to come and speak up to five minutes, is there any public comment tonight? Yes, sir, Mr. Pope, come on up, please. Please state your name for the record, sir.
I'm a gentleman. Shannon, I got a question for you, to see if I, my memory is correct. And 2017, shortly after you took office, you were at a meeting, and I was there. And I think I heard you encourage everybody there to do their shopping in Walker County when practical. Do you recall?
Yes, I brought that up several meetings, yes.
Okay, well, I, I certainly agree with that, and I know there, it has done some good. I, I'd like to, not tonight, but to, uh, next meeting, maybe discuss an example where it did some good. But I'm wondering, okay, that, that was Shannon's suggestion, it wasn't a rule, a form of rule in...
Just bringing awareness.
Yeah, okay. Now, where does the board stand on this? Do you support that suggestion?
Of buying local?
Yeah.
Well, sure I do.
When practical.
Well, yes, well, of course, if we can, anytime that we can keep our, our money here in the county, I, I mean, I do it personally, and I think that we should, you know, as citizens, we're the taxpayers, so I would, I would love to encourage anyone when it's practical and possible to spend their money within Walker County. Yes, sir, I would agree with that.
Now, when you live close to the county line, close to another one, it becomes impractical for some people there, especially those people.
Right.
But, on the other hand, it's still possible in some cases, do your shopping in, in the county. Robert Blakemore, how you feel about it?
Yeah, I, I support it, I live...
I live half a mile from the state line, but I still go back down Wilson Road to shop inside Walker County.
Uh huh, well, good for you, yeah. But a lot of people has to go outside the county for things that Walker County doesn't offer, such as medical and stuff like that. Okay. Brian Hart, how you feel about it?
I, I like the other two commissioners that have spoken, think it's important to try to support our local businesses, yes, I do, I agree.
Okay. Robert?
Absolutely, yes, sir. Patronize our small businesses, patronize our local businesses, spend our dollars in the county.
Okay, so that's unanimous with the board, we all like Walker County, don't we? And we want it to do the best it can, so I, I do think we've been helpful when, when we apply this. So, so that was a question, this one need to get answered tonight.
Got it, thank you, sir.
And thank you for encouraging that back in 2017, yeah, I remember.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else tonight? Yes, ma'am, come up, please.
Hi, I'm Laura Owlesley, and I just wanted to ask some follow-up questions on the pension, and I just wanted to find out, did you all find the weighted average cost per portfolio of the recommended portfolios that you all received?
No, we, we haven't.
Okay. And how about the performance of the portfolios, like I mentioned, you know, mid-year last year?
Well, one thing that we're anxious to look at is ending 1231.
I was going to recommend that, I think that's a good idea. So, yes, thank you. Okay, so, you know, I would encourage you to also look at that weighted cost as well, and I would also ask that you let the public know where the performance stands, because then we can do the math, of course, and figure out the actual risks and the true costs for both plans.
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, hearing none, we'll move forward. Okay, under new business, our first item, Resolution R-001-23, Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to elect a vice chairperson from its members, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, is set forth by Act Number 165, Act passed by the Georgia General Assembly during the 2017, 2018 session, and subsequently approved by the governor. And whereas Part One, Section Eight of the Act states that the first meeting of each year, the board shall elect from its members a vice chairperson. In the event the death, disqualification, resignation of the chairperson, the vice chairperson shall perform the duties and exercise the authority of the chairperson until the new chairperson is chosen, as provided in the act. And whereas the Act further states, the vice chairperson shall preside at the meetings of the board in the absence of the chairperson, and shall serve for the calendar year in which he or she is elected. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that, and we'll insert a name, is elected from its members to serve as vice chairperson for the remaining of the calendar year, so resolved and adopted the 12th day of January 2023. We've done this at the start of our first year, and our second year, and now we're starting our third year, so to stay in good order and in compliance with our enabling act, what is the pleasure of the board for a vice chairperson?
Well, it's been an honor and a privilege to serve this board in this capacity. I appreciate y'all having the confidence in me to do so, and I would like to make in the form of a motion to pass the torch off to Robert Stoltz.
Okay, so we do have a motion by Commissioner Blake Moore for Robert Stoltz to be the vice chairperson. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
So we have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing no other further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, you're the vice chairman.
Thank y'all very much, I'm honored, thank you.
Okay, also, a part of our enabling act is to set the time, date, and location of our meetings. Resolution R-002-23, Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to establish a regular meeting calendar for 2023, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, is set forth by Act Number 165, Act passed by the General Gov, excuse me, Georgia General Assembly during 2017, 2018 session, and subsequently approved by the governor, whereas Part One, Section Eight of the Act states the Board of Commissioners shall hold a minimum of two regular meetings each month at the county seat, and whereas the Act further states, the board at its first meeting of the year shall determine the time, the date, and the place of its regular meetings. Therefore, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the regular meetings will be held at, and we'll insert the time, date, and location, so resolved the 12th day of January 2023. What is the board's desire? Any discussion?
You know, I go to bed early. I do, too. I do, too, but it's hard to get, if you're us working guys, it's just kind of, I, I don't know, I think things work pretty well, but unless you guys feel like we need to change something.
Yeah, I mean, I think seven o'clock works well, just coming from work and, you know, change clothes and come in, so I think seven's a good time, seven P.
Okay, we also need to confirm the, the day of the month. Currently, we're meeting the second and fourth Thursday of every month, is there any changes to that?
I say seven PM, second and fourth Thursday, leave it same.
Okay, we're going to continue to meet here at the Annex Three building as well, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll need a motion to state seven PM, the second and fourth of the month, and the location to be the Annex Two, is that your motion?
Put that in the form of a motion, yes, sir.
All right, we have Commissioner Blake Moore making that motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Stoltz, any further discussion? Hearing none?
Just for clarification, this is Annex Three.
You're right, it is Annex Three, I misspoke, thank you, yes. This is Annex Three, yes, so we'll be meeting here at Annex Three, like we've had for the last two years.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that, I did misspeak on that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, confirmed, and we'll continue our calendar as we have the last two years. Fill that in. Okay, now, the, the item that we did amend our agenda for, Mr. Jad Johnson, our public defense, we'll let you come up and discuss the annual contract renewal.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioners, today I have for you the 2023 Public Defender Contract. That's just the, the same contract that the four counties of our judicial circuit have been signing for the past 18 years. There's, it's, it's what allows the Georgia Public Defender Council to provide the indigent services to Walker County and the other three counties of our circuit. Like I said, it's been more or less unchanged since the beginning, certainly in the last several years that I've been in charge of the office, with one exception, beginning this year in 2023, Catoosa County will begin taking over as the fiscal agent of the circuit. Walker County had been doing that. That simply means that in the past, the other three counties of the circuit, the monies that have to go to the state, the other three counties of the circuit would send a check to Walker County, and then Walker County would cut a check, including its own share, to the state. And now, that, that burden will fall to Catoosa County, Walker County, and the other three counties will send a check to Catoosa, which will then pass those funds on to the state. So basically, it's just the go-between, between these four counties and the state agency. Like I said, Walker County has been in that role since the beginning of the agency in 2005, and this year, Catoosa County Board has already approved them taking that function over, and so it's just a matter of this board agreeing to the contract which lays that out. But otherwise, no, no changes from previous years.
And just to add to that, you know, with the census data come out, Catoosa's now the largest county in our judicial circuit, Walker had, I guess, had been for some time, and so them taking on the responsibility and burden lessens our load of accounting and auditing of that, so we'll.
Yes, Mr. McConnell was very anxious to.
Yeah, it will simplify the accounting office and shift that extra work over to Catoosa County, so thank you. So any questions for Mr. Jad Johnson? Okay, hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the contract as presented?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Blake Moore, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Hart, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I'll sign this, and we'll get this attested real quick, because I know you need to take this back with you tonight.
Yes, sir, thank you.
There you are, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner, I'll get a copy of this to the clerk one side, every one side.
Yes, great, thank you, sir, appreciate your patience. Okay, Resolution R-003-23, Resolution of Walker County Board of Commissioners to set the annual compensation for Walker County coroner, whereas the Georgia General Assembly Act, a local act, Georgia law, 1965, actually, that's supposed to be, okay, okay, 1965, page 2710, that establishes a salary to be paid for the Walker County coroner, and whereas the local act has been amended from time to time, and whereas the county is responsible for payment of the coroner's salary, whereas the coroner's previous set coroner's salary by Resolution R-046-20, at $28,146.30, or $2,345.53 per month, which was effective January 1, 2021, and whereas at the request of the coroner, the county set the coroner's salary by Resolution R-054-21 of $30,146.40, or $2,512.20 per month, effective November 1st, and there's a typo there, there should be November 1st, 2022. And whereas the coroner has requested, no, that would be wrong, that's, no, that was right, 2021 was right, I'm sorry, Billy's already gone, oh, no, there. That was, that, we set that in 2021, because that covered you from '21 and all of '22. So that was, we thought earlier, we were talking, we thought that was a typo, but that is correct. That was affected November 1, 2021, and through '22, whereas the coroner has requested additional supplement to be compensated, therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the county coroner position shall be set at an annual salary of, we put in an annual, and then, or, per month for services rendered retro to January 1, 2023, so resolved and adopted the 12th day of January 2023. So we'll fill in those numbers, it's the board's pleasure. So do we have any recommendations, or have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to increase our county coroner's salary 7.48%, which was approved in the 2023 budget. I'll have to ask you to plug those numbers in, I left them on my phone, which is in my truck, so I'm starting to hear outright.
Okay, yes, that, that was, like you said, was in the budget, that was 7.48% that would go to $32,400 per year, or that quakes to $27,000, not $2700, excuse me, $2700 per month, so that's $32,400 per year, $2,700 per month.
Yes, sir.
Is your motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz to that, do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Hart, any further discussion of the board? Hearing, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the salary has been set. Okay, our next here is an appointment to the assessor board, Resolution R-004-23, Resolution of Walker County Board of Commissioners to establish terms of the office of members of Walker County Board of Assessors, whereas this is in compliance with OCGA 48-5-295, term of office, vacancies, removal by county governing authority, members of the Walker County Board of Assessors shall serve a term of five years. The term shall be staggered so that only one member expired is in a given calendar year, and terms shall expire on December 31st of such calendar year. Whereas a resolution shall not have the effect of shortening or extending the term of office of current members of the Walker County Board of Assessors whose terms have not yet expired, and therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia hereby reaffirm the clarification of the Walker County Board of Assessors to be governed by the following provisions. Appointments, each member shall be the resident of Walker County and at least 21 years of age. No individual may be appointed or reappointed to the Walker County Board of Assessors unless all of the following provisions are met. Must be 21 years of age or older, hold a high school diploma or equivalent, able to complete 40 hours of state mandated training prior to or within 180 days of appointment, of the appointment, able to attend Board of Assessor meetings, does not hold any state, county, and municipal office, not currently employed by the Walker County Assessor's office, not immediately related per OCGA 48-5-290D to any members of Walker County Board of Commissioners. The term of office for each member shall be for five years, staggered terms, with the following exception, two existing terms expire on December 31st, 2023. In order to stagger the board, one of the following terms shall be set at three-year initial before becoming a five-year term. So there would be a term ending December 31st, 2022, the new term would be January 1, 2023, and ending on December 31st, 2027, and you would have a term expiring December 31st, 2023, the term would be January 1, 2024, to December 31st, 2026, and then the second person's term that would expire on December 31st, 2023, would go from January 1, 2024, and would end on December 31st, 2028, and the person's term that would expire on December 31st, 2024, their term would start January 1, 2025, and end on December 31st, 2029, then December 31st, 2025, would start on January, January 1, 2026, and end on December 31st, 2030. Vacancies, in the case of a vacancy, the board at any time, whether caused by death, resignation, removal, or otherwise, the vacancy shall be immediately filled by the recommendation of the chair and approved by the appointment by the Board of Commissioners. Any person appointed to fill a vacancy shall be appointed only to serve for the remainder of the unexpired term of the office, and shall possess the same qualifications required under the part of the regular appointment of, to a full term of office. Said appointment shall take effective immediately and shall serve until the term of the previous expires. If any section, cause, sentence, or phrase of the resolution is held to be invalid or unconstitutional by the courts of the contentment jurisdiction, then said holding shall not in any way affect the validity of the remaining portion of the resolution, so resolved and adopted the 12th day, January 2023. What this does currently, the Board of Assessors up to this point have served six-year terms. So there's five board members, and so this would reclassify their terms once they're reappointed. So we've got one reappointment currently, coming up here tonight, and so instead of that person being reappointed for six years, they would be appointed for five years. We've got two people next year, where their term expires in 2023 and 2024, that would stagger those to get this rotation, so that way, this governing body, every year, at the end of the year, would have a Board of Assessment appointment come up. Otherwise, the way this is, is you have, currently, we've had it where two people come up in one year, and then you have an off year. So this, one reason that this is important, as you see, their state require training, they can't vote on anything until they go through the training, so the years you have two people appointed, if they're new people going onto that board, then you've got only three people that can vote, and if you don't have all three of them there, you don't have a quorum, and it can start logjamming things. So this just really simplifies the flow. Everyone that's currently on the board that's within their terms still stays, they would still finish out their terms, but as those current terms expire going forward, then this would be a little bit of a reset. but as those current terms expire going forward, then this would be a little bit of a reset on those two thousand and twenty-three terms, and then it brings everybody on their new term from six years down to five years. Any questions, comments, or concerns with that modification? Okay. Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve Resolution R dash zero zero four dash twenty-three?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hart, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew, any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution is approved as presented. Okay, this Resolution R dash zero zero five dash twenty-three, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to appoint a member of the Walker County Board of Assessors, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, and whereas OCGA forty-eight-five dash two ninety-five provides that members of the County Board of Assessors shall be appointed by the county governing authority, and whereas one of the duties delegated to the chairman of the board is to appoint members to all committees of the board with the approval of the board, and whereas a vacancy exists on the Walker County Board of Assessors due to the expiration of term, and whereas Chairman Whitfield submits the following appointment to serve as the member of the Walker County Board of Assessors, John Howard, for a term beginning January one, two thousand and twenty-three, and ending on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven, therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the appointment of John Howard to the Walker County Board of Assessors is approved, so resolved and adopted the twelfth day of January, two thousand and twenty-three. So, John Howard's term expired December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-two, so I'd like to make the motion that we reappoint John Howard, he's done a great job and is very interested in staying an active member of the Board of Assessors. So, I do put this resolution in form of a motion to reappoint John Howard for his new five-year term. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Stoltz, any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, Mr. John Howard is reappointed for a new five-year term. Okay, this next agreement, I'm not going to read this, I will give an overview, this is quite an interesting read. But in essence, what we're doing here is we're getting new aerial photography and LiDAR electronic photographs and files that would be utilized by our planning and zoning, our Board of Assessors, our E nine-one-one, our emergency management also is used if you have a national disaster or tornado or something come through, FEMA will come in and look at those. And so, this is something that probably needs to be updated every four or five years or so. This is something we've looked at for a couple of years. The Georgia Mountain Regional Commission got a large group of counties, I think it was about thirteen counties, all in the northern part of the state to get a very aggressive price, they put this out for bid. They awarded this to a company that will do all of this imaging, require all of this information to be, to be validated, and they'll manage the project, they'll do this for sixty-eight dollars per square mile. And then there's an additional two thousand dollar administrative fee that's paid to the Georgia Mountain Regional Commission. But to do a flyover to get all of this information, the current data that we have, the current imagery that we have is, is in that eight years of age, the time this project's done, it's going to be approaching nine years of age, and there's a lot that's changed in our county in the last eight or nine years. Hopefully, maybe going forward, this is done maybe over five years, I think would be a good interim of time to do that at least. And so, they actually stagger the payments out, you know, based off of completion, different deliverables that are validated. This is a phenomenal price, it's sixty-eight dollars, that's not just a mile, but that's a square mile, sixty-eight dollars a square mile. So, the Georgia Mountain Regional Commission, we're not a part of that regional commission, we're in the Northwest Georgia Regional Commission, but what they're doing, when they're doing these flying, they're flying east to west. And so, they're passing over, say, from Dade County to Walker, Catoosa, and all the way over, you know, to the Carolina borders, and I guess all the way to the edge of the state and back and forth east and west, and so that's why they reached out to all the northern counties to do this in concert, to get the best, the best cost at the lowest possible price possible. So, it's a phenomenal opportunity for us, they do require this to be voted on in a public meeting and approved by the Board of Commissioners. So, we have a motion to approve this agreement.
Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Hart to approve the agreement, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Stoltz, any further discussion of the board?
One question.
Yes, sir.
So, in the event of a natural disaster, would we just request the service for a flyover to assess damage, or is that something that?
What, what they would be doing, we would have this, this photography, so when they had disasters, they would be comparing it back.
I see.
And doing a look back on a certain section, so they would probably do some flyovers, or GMA wood, or FEMA wood, and maybe do some photography and match it up to what it used to look like, or validate, you know, a real extreme EF four, EF five, that truly there was a building there, or how many buildings and those type things, and so it's just a verification to help people with, with claims and so forth and total loss.
Thank you.
Yeah, good question. All right, any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agreement is approved. Okay, the next item that we had is, we had put out a bid packet for a roofing project, our facility there at Highway ninety-five, and Highway twenty-seven in Rock Springs, as we refer to the tax and assessor's office, also our planning commissions there, that's the original roof on that building. We've had some, some shingles come off, some, just the age and wear and tear of that facility, and so we've had to put in some temporary replacement shingles. But we did put this out on the Georgia procurement site, as a large project, we had quite a bit of interest. I believe we had seven bids that met the time requirement in submitting. We did do a, a bid opening at the office that any of the bidders could attend, we did have one bidder attend, and we did have one bid that came in a day late, they put it in a FedEx envelope, tried to get it here on time, and FedEx did not get that to us on time, so that one had to be disqualified because it was late, unfortunately. We looked through all the bids and see if they made the requirement. The, the company that submitted actually the lowest cost, there was other requirements in the bid that they did not meet, and so we've had to actually throw that one to the side. This was the second lowest bid, this company came with a real nice proposal, and all of the documentation, verification of everything that was asked for. Also, in their proposal, they're saying that they should have the job completed within fourteen days of this board approving this. But you'll see also in the presentation, that building up there has a flat roof, it's a TPO roof, so that does not include that. The TPO roof is in very good condition. This is just replacing all the shingles, and you can see there's a lot of pitch changes and angles and things to that roof, so it's going to be quite a, an interesting project for them to tackle. But the recommendation for this, accepting this bid in the amount of forty-four thousand, one hundred dollars, and if there's any decking that needs to be replaced, the four-by-eight decking sheet would be installed at seventy-five dollars per sheet, and then expected completion date, if awarded, is, they typed in fourteen days after the notice to proceed. This is CGS LLC, based out of Norcross, Georgia, and they have met all the requirements, and so, do we have any questions?
No, one question, so, I, I did look through all this, you said fourteen days to notice to proceed, if we tell them to proceed tomorrow, and it, is a rain clause in here?
Yes, there is a rain clause that, you know, any rain dates, they get credit for those.
I didn't see that, so I'm making sure.
Brian, did you, I, I didn't look, I didn't see the, the bid packet, did you look over the bid packet itself? And I'd like to know who prepared the bid packet for us?
I looked over this particular bid.
Right, no, the, 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 the bid packet that was put out.
It was online, I did not look at it.
I, I didn't, I didn't either, I was supposed to, who prepared that for us?
That was done internally by our staff, we had had a format that we had used for all of our paving that we've done over the years, so we took and modified that bid packet to conform to this roofing project, and laid out the specifications of the, the shingle requirement, the felt, the drip edge, all of those different things were spelled out in that proposal, let's see if they captured that.
It was in here, I don't remember what.
Yeah, all of the specifications of what we were asking for was in that, I don't know if they resummarized that in theirs or not. We did have many of the bidders come out and do a site visit, some of them had some, some additional questions that was filled in, but didn't anyone question the, the detail of the scope of work, or the requirements of the work? They just had some questions of clarification.
Good.
Any other questions? Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that the board approve the bid of forty-four thousand, one hundred dollars from CGS LLC. Do we have a second?
Yes, I'll second that.
Have a second by Commissioner Hart, any further discussion of the board? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that will be awarded to that company.
Just telling us it's going to rain the next two weeks.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, it's going to be tough, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, the next item we have is purchase order two thousand and twenty-three dash four sixty-three, in the amount of three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars for ten vehicles for the Walker County Sheriff's Office, funded by the two thousand and twenty-twenty splosh. So, we have Captain Anderson here tonight to come speak to us about his annual vehicle funding request.
I appreciate the opportunity. You know, as you know, last year, we, we tried to buy about a dozen vehicles a year. Last year was a tough year, it was hard to find vehicles. We did locate six vehicles, which kind of put us behind, so this year, we're, prices have increased, so it's dropped us down, but we're going to purchase ten vehicles from Jenkins Dodge here in Lefet. Vehicles be distributed up between different divisions within the sheriff's office, and also, there's going to be two replacement K nine vehicles in there as well, so.
Okay, so, just for, for the record, this is part of their splosh budget, we do have the funds available, so at the time of, of invoice, this would be, you know, paid in full, so there's not any issues with funds being available. As the captain says, they try to replace a dozen or so every year, just to keep up.
We run close to a million miles a year, so, I mean, our vehicles, if you get five years out of a vehicle before it becomes really unsafe to drive and, like, pursuit driving, so we try to replace as much as we can, but with price increases, I foresee over the years, that quantity dropping because, as you can tell with the Dodges, there was a substantial increase from last year, well, two years ago, when we were able to find some.
Yes.
What were that, so these are roughly, we have thirty-seven thousand dollars each, what were they?
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a, an average, there's actually seven Dodge Charger police vehicles in that, and three Dodge Durango police vehicles in that bid, the, the Durangos were a little more, so that's just kind of an average by ten.
And those will be, two of those will be a K nine?
Yes, replace two of the ones that are pretty old now.
So, will you put these ten, as you get these vehicles, you'll put these ten in the fleet, will you do you take ten out then?
Typically, what we try to do is salvage some older vehicles as spare vehicles, just in case, God forbid, somebody wrecks, or for some reason, there's a maintenance issue that may take a week or two, so we'll have something to put them in. We typically will keep cars as long as we can, as long as they're safe to drive. But in, in some of these cases, some of our older cars, we're going to have to remove the car cameras from, so really, as far as patrol, we wouldn't utilize those because they wouldn't have the in-car cameras in them, so it'd be something that we'd utilize either with court services or with detention.
Good question, anything else from the board? We have a motion to approve the purchase order to Jenkins Chrysler's Dodge of Lefet, the amount of three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars for the sheriff's office.
Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Stoltz, have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Askew, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the purchase order is approved. Thank you for coming to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can, can you have someone email me a signed copy of that purchase order tomorrow or sometime?
Get there right to you.
Appreciate it, Captain.
Okay, we do have our monthly statistical data report. Animal Shelter did receive in a hundred and ten dogs and six cats, they were successful in getting a hundred and forty-six dogs and six cats, so we had some from the prior months that we were able to, to get out and either get adopted, rescue, or return to owners. I'm not going to cover everything in here for the sake of time, but one thing, we do have our roadside trash team back up and running. You'll see there in the month of December, twenty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty pounds of roadside litter picked up. It was two hundred and twenty-two registered voters added, our fire department handled eight hundred and thirty-eight calls and installed thirteen smoke alarms, so our smoke alarm program still seems, proves to be very important to our citizens. Mountain Cove Farms had a very busy December, those numbers were up, and you can see historically, we're kind of back to our pre-COVID pandemic levels of, we had thirty-two stays in December, that got us to a thousand and sixteen for the year. Single-family home construction had nine permits pulled, it got us to a hundred and forty-two for the year. And then our, added a hundred and ten followers to Facebook, and had forty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-three visitors to our website, and added twenty-eight subscribers to our newsletter. And our transit successfully moved two thousand, two hundred and ten trips on our transit system, so there's some other information there. This being the December report, it gives you a true comparison of the prior years. So, we look at this report, you can see comparative year-end data back to two thousand and seventeen, when we first started tracking this, and see how things have progressed and how things have changed over time. Okay, at this time of our agenda, this is our commissioner comments, so we'll start our District One, Commissioner Blakemore for public comments.
Just appreciate the ones that came out, your comments and questions, help us better do our job. If I can help in any way, please, please call, text, or email, thank you.
Hard to top, Commissioner Blakemore, thank y'all for your participation, as he said, it does help us to better govern. I do want to throw a hands up to the, all of our employees, starting this new year. I know it's, it's a job, it takes everybody to get it done, but we've got a heck of a team, and they, they work hard, these inclement weather, some of the stuff we've had to deal with and all, so just starting the new year, I just want to state my thanks to everybody, appreciate the hard work.
Very good, Commissioner Hart?
Yeah, just a shout out to our litter control, as Shannon read that number, that's almost twelve tons of litter they picked up on the side of the road this month.
Yes.
And there were holidays in there, so I know Hal, Hal's doing that for us now, I've reached out to him to get a couple of roads for me, and he's been very user-friendly to get those roads in our communities, so we got behind on that, but just be understanding, we are catching up, and Hal's doing a good job working on that. The other thing is, and Colin left, but a special thanks to him, we've been working for six months to try to get the parking lot striped at the Mercy Valley Community Center, Colin got that done for us a couple of weeks ago, so appreciate that, Robert?
Yes, sir. Want to appreciate everyone coming out tonight, and to reiterate what Commissioner Askew said, appreciate all the hard work our county employees do, you work out in bad weather and work hard, and we certainly do appreciate all the efforts in keeping our county going. I want to thank this board for allowing me to serve as vice chairman, I am just honored to do that, I certainly do appreciate it. And finally, I want to thank everyone for all the condolences for the passing of my mother, I certainly appreciate that, thank the board as well. It, it's hard to walk in this building and not think of her, she worked in this building for thirty years. So, every time I come in, I think of mom, but just wanted to say thanks again for everyone's condolences, thank you, sir.
Thank you, I also just want to add that our county offices will, our regular offices will be closed on Monday for Martin Luther King Excerpts Day, but all of our first responders and nine-one-one, and several of our people behind the scene will be working, so we appreciate those that work the holidays and take off another day in exchange, and hopefully, we won't have any bad weather or incidents happen to have to activate more. won't have any bad weather or incidents happen to have to activate more people, but we will close to observe for Martin Luther King Day. Okay, our time for executive session, we have a motion for executive session and state the reason in the motion, please.
Make a motion for executive session for personnel.
Okay, very good.
And property.
Okay, we have a motion for executive session for...
I say park, but real estate.
Okay. For personnel and real estate, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Blakemore, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll stand adjourned until after executive session and we'll come back and close out the meeting. Thank you all.
Hi, I'm Joe Leguie, Public Relations Director for Walker County Government. The board has just entered executive session. This is a process that allows elected officials to discuss a specific, sensitive topic behind closed doors. These are topics that are exempt from the Georgia Open Meetings Act. Executive session topics must fall into one of three categories: litigation, real estate, or personnel matters. In terms of litigation, the need may arise for the board to consult with the county attorney on pending or potential lawsuits, settlements, claims, administrative proceedings, or other judicial actions brought by or against Walker County government, its officers, or employees. Real estate covers discussions regarding the future purchase or acquisition, disposal, or lease of property. Personnel matters would cover the discussion or deliberation on the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, or dismissal of a Walker County government officer or employee. Now, if a vote is needed pertaining to an issue discussed in the executive session, it must be taken in an open meeting, otherwise it is not binding. Thanks for watching, and we'll be back in a bit.
Download Walker County's Siren GPS app today for Apple and Android devices and be the first to know about bad weather and other community concerns and interests.
Okay, it is 10:02 PM, January 12, 2023, we just exited our executive session, no further business at this time, but we have a motion to close out our meeting tonight.
Motion to adjourn.
A motion by Commissioner Hart, we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stoltz, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, 10:03, we stand adjourned.